Okay, sorry for the late start. We had a couple of meetings prior to this. Ran a little long. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:11, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adjustments. I see none? Any out there? No? Okay. Approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, December 6th, 2021, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Monday, December 6th, 2021, executive session at 5:30. Monday, November 29th, 2021, executive session at 4:00 PM. And Monday, November 29th, 2021, executive session at 5:00 PM. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Mapes? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Public comments. I don't believe I see any public here. Do we have any public on Zoom? No public on Zoom. Thank you. Communications? Any communications, Mr. Nelson?
No communications, no.
We did have an email from a previous superintendent, Betsy St. Pierre, regarding Liz Dudgeon, but I will hold that until we recognize Liz for her service later on.
John Paulsia today?
John Paulsia? No, it's exciting. He reports construction projects. Mr. Nelson?
Sure. I attended the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center Construction Arbitration Hearing that was against one of the subcontractors and the contractor. That took place last week. It took place all day on Thursday. I was in person all day on Thursday, and then Friday it was done via Zoom. So the arbitration hearing is over. Right now, both parties need to file their written arguments by Wednesday, December 29th, and then the arbitrator, whose decision is final, will decide in January. We're expecting a decision in mid-January. Our legal counsel felt things went well overall. There are three issues. There's one issue involving expansion loops, a second issue involving dust collection system, and a third issue on retainage that was owed to Warren. So I will keep people updated on that. And then also, we're working on the final requisitions for the converted middle school, the converted elementary school, in essence Sanford Middle School, and Sanford Pride Elementary. We do have a remaining item, one of the only remaining items is the gym floor at the Sanford Middle School, and that is scheduled to be fixed over break with that. And we'll also need final removal releases from all the subcontractors for both jobs before we sign the requisitions and issue final payment. And we're waiting for confirmation that all the closeout documents and punchlights are complete. And then also, one of the major issues that we still have at the high school and technical center is the tripping out of some of the air handling units, and those are still going on. Remember, we did bring people on site to be able to do that, and so that work is continuing. Actually, it's timely in sense as for us to be able to troubleshoot those and figure out what needs to be changed to correct the problem areas. And so that's a construction update.
Excellent. Any questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Now we have the SHS SRTC Scheduling Advisory Committee.
Sure. That committee met last Tuesday, December 14th. We met during Spartan Time down at the high school. The focus of that meeting was the new skinny block. That was the block that replaced the Block 5 in the previous schedule. Had some very good dialogue and good discussion there where we had people weigh in on the skinny block from student perspectives, as well as staff perspectives, parent perspectives. But we ran out of some time on that, so we'll pick up and finish that discussion for our next meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, January 10th, at 2:30 in the Sanford Performing Arts Center. We also will be talking about sports and other after-school activities' impact on the schedule, some options for classes and credits outside the typical schedule, and equal opportunities and access for all. And remember, we're getting close to looking at what's wrong with our current schedule, what works with our current schedule, and then to be reviewing other schedule options. As I mentioned, our next meeting will be Monday, January 10th.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Paula, JP, anything to add to that? I know you both were at the meeting, right? I missed it, unfortunately.
I don't have very much. I'm just excited that this process has begun, and I'm looking forward to figuring out what results come out of it.
Nice, thanks. Okay, next we have Sanford Performing Arts Committee.
Yeah, I don't have anything specific, just that we're continuing with our lineup for the season, and we've had some amazing shows, and we've had tremendous feedback about how wonderful everything that we have had on the stage has been. And we hope that everybody checks out the website and Facebook page and comes and enjoys some more shows.
Excellent. It's great to have the Performing Arts Center back up and running.
And I'll just add that kudos to our maintenance and our custodial staff. We had a show yesterday at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, and obviously with the storm that we had on Saturday night, to be able to have them come in and turn that around so that we could have the show and everyone can attend that safely. Kudos to them. And we have finished both our middle school and high school holiday concerts, and those are on WSSR-TV. So if you did not have a chance to be able to attend and see those, nice work by Sarah, and they are on WSSR-TV where you'll be able to do those, put those in. So I encourage people to do that because some outstanding performances by our middle school and high school music programs.
Excellent. And it's nice to have the kids back performing the music. Okay, now onto the superintendent's report. Mr. Nelson?
Is it okay if I go down to the podium for the recognition?
You go right ahead and do whatever you want. You have the power. You do whatever you want.
Okay, wanted to come, and it's just part of the agenda, we have a couple of people we'd like to recognize this evening. The first one is our school committee chair, Mr. Jamison. Don is finishing out his time on the school committee. He's a two-time school committee member and a two-time school committee chair. And I know one of my first introductions to Sanford involved Don. When I was interviewing for the assistant superintendent position, Don was on the interview committee. And I remember coming out of that interview very impressed, very impressed with the committee, but I also remember Don stood out to me on that committee of just his overall enthusiasm and his overall whole loving Sanford and really caring about Sanford students. I think he was there representing probably the band and the music program and the boosters with that. But I just walked out of there with an idea about these people are passionate about Sanford, and this is something that I wanted to come and be part of. And I'm glad I did, and I'm glad I've had a chance to work with Don in his role on the school committee and as the school committee chair for that. Don is about all kids, and that shows in that he stayed on the school committee even after his kids graduated to be able to do that, because I think he understands the importance of the work and is very passionate about that. With his other job, this job can turn into almost what feels like a full-time job. In his other job, he really brings an analytic engineer perspective to his work and a certain accountability that's important, and he's been able to transition that over to our work here on the school committee. Don was an initial founding member of the Legacy Foundation. He's been a big supporter of WSSR-TV and its potential, also on the Schedule Advisory Committee, bringing a perspective that I think can be very helpful for us as we try to tackle that work, to be able to do that. I mentioned his work with the band and music boosters. You want to really see something that's well-run, show up when we're doing the marching band competition championships here. And there's a reason people want to come back to Sanford every year for those championships. It's a wonderful, beautiful facility, but also Don and his crew behind the scenes really make it work where it's done first class for that. So, you know, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a big loss with Don leaving the school committee, wanting what's best for all students and a fair, balanced approach, and being very positive, very realistic, but also very positive. So, we got you a plaque, okay? I'm not sure if you've already got one of these, but we've got you another one. Dedicated to Donald Jamison by the Sanford School Department in recognition of your outstanding leadership and contributions as school committee member. And it shows the times that you were a member, January 2011, December 2013, January 2019, December 2021, and as chair, that was January 2012, December 2012, and January 2020 to December 2021. So, Don, tonight's your last meeting, I think, or it's getting close to your last meeting, last official meeting.
You never know. We'll probably have another couple of meetings next week just because...
Yeah, where things are going. But this is probably the last one. We'll have an opportunity to thank you and recognize you, Don, for that. So, on behalf of the Sanford School Department, as well as the Sanford School Committee, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. That was very kind. It's been a good, it's been a good time. I enjoy the school committee. It is a ton of work. And I think, like I said when I said I wasn't running for reelection in the papers, I truly do believe that, like, turnover in public positions is good. You know, as much as I enjoy it, as much as I like to contribute, I think it's good to get another, another perspective in. So, have fun without me, but I'm still around, so I'm sure you won't, you won't, you won't miss me too much. Now, the more important one, I think, is recognizing Liz.
Well, hold on. Before we move in, is there anybody who wants to add anything about Don before he tries to get out of this?
Yeah, I definitely do. I always wondered where engineers really belong, and I can say they do belong on the school committee. Don had it right. He lets you do your job. He doesn't get emotional. It's just the facts. He understands the policies. He supports all that are involved. He tries to keep the meetings tight, doesn't let us wander unless he wants to wander. I really believe that communities, school committees, and cities would be better off if they had folks like Don at the helm. So, I've gotten to know Don. Appreciate it. He and his wife make some great cookies. So, I've really enjoyed participating with Don, so thank you.
Don, thank you. It's been, we've worked together now multiple years on different positions here. Again, like Jonathan and Matt have said, you've done a heck of a nice job, and I'm glad you, you know, leading, you were leading the last couple, you know, last year, and it's been a pleasure, and good luck in whatever endeavor you proceed to take on. And I'm sure there'll be something here at the school that you will be doing. But thank you.
Thanks for the glowing endorsements. I'll look to you guys for reference letters when I want to apply for another chair position.
If I'm under oath, I can't do it.
And as Don, we all said, and as Don mentioned, we do have another person who's also leaving the Sanford School Department, and that person is Lidge Dudgeon. And Liz has been the executive administrative assistant at Central Office, working for the superintendent, assistant superintendent. Similar to Don, she's had two stints in doing that. Her first stint was from 1977 to 1987, and then took a break, and then Liz returned back from 2006 to 2021. And it also, it's a little bit bittersweet that we get to, that Liz is leaving us because she's been such an important part of our team and such an important part of the work. Liz is someone who really, and Liz is not here tonight. That is her choice. That's kind of her nature. She's someone who would rather, I think, be behind the scenes. And I really think that she's someone who, she's the engine that has really allowed the Sanford School Department and the school committee to have things run smoothly. Someone, obviously, that I know I can speak to as far as the important work that she did in making our jobs all easier in that sense. Very much appreciated, but also not just appreciated by Central Office. Liz is someone that I think over the years has made connections throughout the district, as someone who can be a tremendous resource for all the schools to be able to be able to stay connected to Central Office and be able to get the information that they need to do that. I know as she was heading into retirement, all of the various schools had their various thank yous that they compiled to be able to do that for Liz. And I think that just goes to show the impact that she has, that it was wide-reaching, and one that has been very much appreciated and gonna be very much missed. She could always see things from many different perspectives. She could see it, you know, coming from an employee of the Sanford School Department, but she's also someone who lives in Sanford, is a citizen, someone as a parent, as a grandparent, and all of those perspectives were very helpful to be able to look at that. So, before I turn it over to see if there's anybody else who wants to say anything, we do have a plaque for Liz as she heads into retirement. I'll read it. It says, "Dedicated to Elizabeth Dudgeon by the Sanford School Department in recognition of your outstanding dedication and contributions as an executive assistant," and the two stints that I talked about, December 1977 to December 1987, and August 2006 to December 2021. So, congratulations and a big thank you to Liz on her retirement.
Excellent. And I wanted to make sure I read, former superintendent Betsy St. Pierre actually emailed us, and she had some nice things to say about Liz. So, I'm gonna read from that email. "Liz's knowledge of policy, protocol, process, and contact information were significant to the successful operation of our school department for years. Her consistent calm demeanor and support of all superintendents provided a positive climate that allowed all of us to complete the arduous tasks of managing a very diverse school system. Liz was, to me, a powerful example of the professionalism and all the skills needed for successful accomplishment of many of our district's goals and objectives. All best wishes, Liz, for a restful and happy retirement. Betsy St. Pierre." I think Betsy really summed that up pretty nice, so I wanted to make sure I read it. Liz was always great there, knew what you needed before you needed it, and just kind of made sure everything ran well. So, I hope she does truly enjoy retirement. Anybody else want to add on?
I just wanted to touch upon what Matt said about Liz, because prior to being on the school committee and being an active parent, I would just send an email, and she would get right back to me. It was always just a wealth of knowledge and a resource for me as well, and I'm sure many other families in town as well. So, she will be missed. She definitely has big shoes to fill as well, but she'll be missed. And happy retirement.
Mr. Mapes?
I've known Liz a long time, and it's kind of a different nature, but I would agree with everything that's been said. I'd also add that her intellect and humor with just the right dose of sarcasm was incredible. She was, she was a, she's a fun person.
Good point, Jonathan. Okay, anything else? Best of luck with Liz, and come back and visit. I'm sure you will.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a Maine School solar presentation up next?
Yep. I'd like to introduce Michael Bartner from Revision Energy, who's gonna provide an introduction to the net energy billing credit program for the school committee this evening. Michael, welcome.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Cheryl, for this opportunity. Funny connection with Sanford School Department. My father was actually assistant, I mean, assistant principal in 1984, 1985 at the high school. Last name Bartner, if anyone recognizes the name. I guess maybe Liz. We should ask Liz if she remembers.
We might have some people up here who might have had some dealings with the assistant principal. I'm just saying.
But anyway, he says hi to everyone. So, yeah, I'm here tonight to talk about solar involvement for the school district. This is a way to save some significant money on your electricity bill, and also do good, support what's needed to be done with climate work, and proliferate solar, solar in Maine. So, a little bit about Revision Energy. You might have seen our logo around. We've been around the state for close to 20 years and 10 more if you added the previous name to it. You know, our co-founders are original solar guys here in Maine, when it was just nascent industry. Now, we're 328 employee-owned strong, and here's a, I should update that number right there. But, yeah, we're a growing company, and solar is really, really hot. We're a certified B Corporation, meaning we take social and environmental decisions into our decision-making processes. So, what brings me here today was some legislation that was passed a couple of years ago called LD 1711. It overhauls solar, the solar industry in Maine. So, before, system size was limited. You could only do 660 KW. Now, it was bumped up to five megawatts. So, if you were wondering, scratching your head, why is all this solar happening around the state? It's because of this legislation. And it modernized what's called net energy billing, NEB, which is a way to get credit for solar development. The Maine Public Utilities Commission oversees the implementation of LD 1711. So, it's a, you know, partnership with CMP, Maine Public Utilities Commission, solar developers like ourselves. It's a way to incentivize solar in the state. So, one specific part of the legislation is, I want to really zoom in with you tonight. It's called a net energy billing credit. And what these are are monetary credits that appear on your CMP bill. I'll just take a second just to describe. Before this legislation was passed, it was, it was kind of a nightmare for school districts to get involved with solar, because, you know, you had a, just think about one account attached to a solar system. Now, all of the school districts, you know, you have multiple accounts, electricity CMP accounts, and all of them can kind of be looked at at one in one holistic framework and be attached to a solar array. So, you know, we're basically making a map between a solar array and all of a school districts, or municipalities, or, you know, any large entity. And that was really the, you know, the great thing about this legislation was that it opened the door for, for this, you know, large-scale solar development, and in a way, without any upfront cost, large institutions to save money on their electricity bill. So, it's, it's really a win-win-win all around. So, I'm not here to talk about putting solar up on your schools, your property that you own. And I hope that's somewhat of a sigh of relief for all of you, you know. Not like we don't do that. We've done dozens and dozens of projects for schools, you know, similar to that. And we, you know, if you're saying, yeah, you know, let's talk about that, you know, we can. But what I'm, what I'm here to do is talk about the off-site solar program that we offer, which is, again, solar in a field somewhere in CMP territory, which generates, so forget everything you used to think about solar, kilowatt-hours and, you know, electrons and all that. Just think about it as, as energy flowing into the grid. Well, they do produce electrons, and then they flow to the CMP grid. And then when they flow to the CMP grid, they produce net energy billing credits, monetary credits that offset your electricity bill. So, I'm just gonna move on. I want to take questions in a minute. But, so this is a project we're building in Walderboro, 2.3 megawatt project. So, how does this, this work? So, you're saying, so I'm telling you that, that in these, at no cost to you, to the district, that electrons flow to the CMP grid, and they produce these credits. And so, it sounds like too good to be true. So, someone owns this solar array, right? Part of the value that, that you receive on these credits that come to your CMP bill, part of that value you need to pay to the system owner. But the good news is that you're still walking away with savings. And it's actually guaranteed savings in the sense that it's, whatever the electricity prices are, you're kind of on a roller coaster with them. So, if the electricity prices rise, they're gonna save more. If they, if they drop, for whatever reason, you'll save a little bit less. But as long as electricity prices exist, the district will save a set percentage. So, I'm just gonna step back and give you kind of a, you know, an easy way to put your head around, around this, which is, let's say I, I meet you before you do your grocery shopping at Hanaford in the parking lot, and I give you a hundred-dollar gift card. You, not for free, remember. It's like, you know, I own the gift card, just like if someone owns, owns a solar array. So, I'm not giving this gift card to you for free, but I'm giving this hundred-dollar gift, gift card to you for $85. And then you can go into Hanaford and buy whatever you want. So, the reason why this relates is that all of the charges on your CMP bills, just think about it as all the groceries, like the demand charges, the supply charges, the delivery charges, the service charges, all of that is like your Hanaford, you know, items. And this, this net energy billing credit, it, you know, you're getting it at a discount. So, so basically, it's a simple equation, which is the value of this gift card, let's say it's $100,000, the, the cost of the gift card, let's say it's $85,000, and so you're walking away with $15,000 of savings. Does everyone kind of follow me that? Okay. So, this is how it looks on paper in terms of Sanford School Department. So, $537,000 is the budget number for the electricity cost of Sanford School Department next year. So, using the net energy billing credit that the Maine Public Utilities Commission set for 2022, you find that number where it says, it's the fourth line down, 8.89 cents. So, yeah, I don't want to get into the weed too much with the numbers, but that's, that's the, this, this value of the net energy billing credit. And the number of credits that you need to purchase is 2 million, it's the next line down, 2.4 million credits, which actually happens to be the number of kilowatt-hours. But I don't want to, again, I'm trying not to speak in terms of energy speak. I'm trying to talk in just in terms of pure dollars, because it really is, that's how it will appear on your CMP bill. It will just say, "Net energy billing credit." And when you do that math, in terms of like the gift card going back, you know, the value of these credits coming out of your bill, the amount you pay for those credits, at the end of the day, the first year, the district would save $82,000, that 82,161 number. Over the 20-year contract, the savings would be 1,897,000, you know, round up, you know, approximately 1.9 million over 20 years. So, you know, significant savings, you know, when Liz and my dad, you know, when they were working back in the 80s, I know this is, we're talking long, long periods, but it is a, it's a guarantee, you know, it's a significant savings, and it's promoting solar development, which is, which is all good things. So, I didn't mean to like... So I didn't mean to like, how you stare at this, at this, all these numbers, but I just wanted to kind of make sure that you understood the nuts and bolts of how, how it works. Any questions right now before I move on?
Yeah, it's bewildering. So it's not easy to follow for most folks, really it isn't. I mean, it sounds like, as I always tell my kids, there's no free lunch. So where's the discount come from, right?
Yeah, you're, you're wondering where the, the discount comes from? Is it, is it, it's made out of, you know, it's all of a sudden you're, so again, this, this has to do with incentivizing solar in Maine, so with this legislation. And so solar energy is, is the cheapest form of energy out there, right? It's once, once you have that initial capital investment, the savings are significant, right? So it's unlike, you know, right now, Mainers are spending $5 billion a year to import fossil fuels into our state. So solar is, it flips that on its side. It's, it's, you know, the initial investment and then long-term savings. So you're just in terms of wrapping your head around the potential for, for solar, right, is, is the number one concept. And then what the Maine Public Utilities Commission did is they said for every kilowatt hour produced, we're going to give you this credit on your bill for, for a solar array. So when, and so that's what that .1889 number is. It's for a medium general service account, which most of the schools have. For every kilowatt hour that you attach your school district's electricity to, it's generating that 8.5 cents. And so it's not made up, you know, it's actually, it's an arbitrary number, but it is, it's, it's not in the sense that it's based on electricity prices. So we just saw a huge spike in electricity prices, which means the value of this program is, is, is going up. In our, in our analysis, we put in a two and a half percent, a 2% escalator on energy costs. Historically, if you look at the last 30 years, it's been a two and a half percent increase in energy costs. So, you know, we, we've, we were conservative in these cost savings numbers. It's definitely, I mean, in terms of the way all the numbers fit together, I mean, I can show, I can show you exactly how it works in terms of the $537,000 that, that you spend annually. We're not going after all of that. If we went after all of it, it would be a straight 18% discount on that $537,000 number. We're only going after 85% of it to be conservative. Some school districts are saying, no, we want to get more savings, you know, give us 90%. We don't recommend, you know, we recommend 85% of your load. So out of the $537,000, let's see if we can go back to this slide.
Could I ask you a question?
Yep.
Are there other large districts that are doing this that have signed on?
Yeah.
That's my number one.
Yep.
And then number two, is, is there a kind of a large sum of money that you are looking forward to start this? Or is this just keeps on, we just keep on paying the bills and all of a sudden we magically start saving money?
Yeah, the latter is, is the case, is you just keep on paying, you know, continue to pay the bills. There's no upfront cost to this program. What, what we're looking to do is to get a contract in front of the school district to work with Drummond Woodsum or whoever your attorney is. Drummond Woodsum is very familiar with these contracts. They'll tell you the dozen, couple dozen, three dozen school districts, large, I mean, Biddeford Public Schools recently signed on. So, you know, you're not alone in terms of looking at this, this great cost savings program. So does that answer your question? Yeah.
Actually, can I, let me just kind of distill this down.
Great.
To make sure I'm understanding it. So.
You're an engineer, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, so what we're doing is there's, there's a solar farm somewhere that exists.
Yeah.
We're saying, hey, we're going to purchase that, purchase that energy to come to Sanford School Department. With that, there's kind of a government subsidy funding, whatever you will, that allows us to get that at like 85 cents on the dollar, more or less. But we have to sign on to the contract. So my questions would be, and I'm not sure if you can answer them or not. So I'm thinking like, you know, well, where are the risks? Because you're right, it's one of those like, is this too good to be true? You know, why wouldn't they just sell their energy to someone else for the dollar instead of the 85 cents? So are we essentially saying that we're committing to taking so much energy from a certain solar field somewhere? It's like that Walderboro one that you showed. Are we saying, hey, Sanford's saying that we're going to take however many kilowatt hours from that energy, from that solar array?
Yeah, you are. Yep, you're, you're committing to, and that's why when I was diving into Mr. May's question about, you know, the numbers, you know, I was particularly saying, you want to be conservative. You're, you don't want to go for.
You don't want to pay for energy that you're not going to use.
Yeah, you don't, right. And so, but at the same time, electrification of everything is, is happening. School buses, heating, so, you know, you want to, you want to go for it, but you don't want to be overreaching in terms of, you know? And so, yeah, just, you know, looking at saving $82,000 a year, 1.9 million basically over 20 years, I mean, that's, that's the way you want to be thinking about it. But yeah, you are, without owning, owning the system, I mean, everyone makes out equally. So let me just tell you, like, so revision, what we, what we're doing is we're finding the, the piece of land for the solar farm. We're building it, you know, all of the permits and interconnection and all of that. We are maintaining it, so we're getting paid to, over the 20 years to, to maintain it. The investor, so you ask, you kind of wondering like, who owns this thing, right? So an investor, it happens to be the largest community solar farm asset owner in the country that we partner with on these solar farms. So it's very well established, they know how to run, run these. And they are benefiting because they're looking for, well, they're looking for CMP bills. They don't have CMP bills. So, I mean, you mentioned government incentives. The government incentive is if you have an electricity bill in Maine, right? These investor partner, they don't have electricity bills. So they need to find, you know, who, where are the, the large electricity bills? And so, because the, the way solar works is, it's, it's worked by the Investment Tax Credit, the ITC. And so this investor has tax equity. They have, you know, they pay a lot of taxes. And so to, to, to make solar work, that's the investment for them, is they make this huge upfront multimillion dollar investment. And then they're getting their return off with a tax break because of the Investment Tax Credit. But they can't just have it, you know, this system producing energy and not going anywhere. So they have to find a partner. And so it's kind of a win-win-win in the sense that revision get, you know, gets paid to build it, maintain it. The investor gets a tax break, they get paid, some of their payback is, is from the district. And the district wins without owning the system. The district wins by saving money on their electricity bill, guaranteed in terms of, and again, you'll check with or your attorney about this, you know, making sure that everything I'm saying is legit. Like I, I highly recommend not just signing this thing, but running it by her. And I mean, she's very, Drummond Woodsum is very used to looking at these agreements now, so it's not going to, they'll kind of walk you through, you could bring her in here, have the same type of conversation with her. She might tell you slightly different things in terms of, you know, the risk profile is, I mean, you nailed it, which is you're, you're agreeing, as long as you're a school district, you're going to have electricity bills. But what happens if for some reason you're not a school district anymore? Which is, I mean, these are the risks, like, that's highly, highly unlikely, right? Or, you know, what's, what's the chance that you're going to down, you know, downsize or things like that? Again, then you might say, okay, we don't want to do 85%, we want to do 70%. But again, because of the electrification of school buses, heating, just more and more demand from high tech with, with electricity, that's not the direction things are going. The direction is higher electricity prices. And so.
Yeah, so, so it sounds like the, kind of the life expectancy of the, the field that we'd be buying is 20 years, is that what you said?
So the panels are warranted for 25 years.
Okay.
So, yeah, but it's a 20-year agreement with five-year extensions.
Yeah, so that's what I was just going to ask, the next thing was the contract. What are you getting into? It would be 20 years is the initial contract that you look for? So that's a pretty, I would be leery of that for me, like, because that's a big thing to commit to saying, yeah, for the next 20 years, we're going to buy this much from there. So that's just.
And the longevity of the, the contract, it's because it's a multimillion dollar system that's being built. And so they need to have off-takers that say, we are going to be around, we want the savings opportunity, you know? Yeah, I would say that's why we're not talking to small businesses.
Yeah, well, it makes sense why you'd go to school departments because we are most likely still going to be here 20 years from now.
Municipalities. I mean, the city of Portland, South Portland, they've all signed on to Lewiston, they've all signed on to these. You know, this is very, these are, these are very popular among the places that are in Maine that are going to exist. And then if you look at the big hospitals, if you look at the big, you know, they've all signed on to agreements like this because they're going to be around, they're not going away.
And I guess, and the only other thing, don't take this the wrong way, the only other concern I would have is the existence of your company if you're the ones that are supposed to maintain it for 20 years.
Yeah, great question.
So that's another concern.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the asset owner, they're in charge of, they're not going to get paid. They won't get paid on, on their investment, on their investment unless the system's working. So in terms of the risk, going back to your risk question, that's absolutely the question, by the way, that we should be talking about. So if the system does not generate power, then no credits flow to your CMP bills. And therefore you continue to pay your CMP bills just like you are now. So there's no downside in terms of, but the investor is not going to get paid. So their incentive is like, you know, they're, this is an only, the only solar array they own. They own, this is a, this is a big business now for, you know, solar is a, is a booming industry nationwide right now. So if we're not around for whatever reason, we, you know, the, the system's going to get taken care of. You know, it's insured, it's all, you know, again, the contract is a, is a link, I mean, there's.
So the, the risk is not getting the credit? That's really the risk?
Right, the risk is not signing on to the agreement and then having the system, you know, and not getting the credit. Because then all these other school districts are going to be signing on and Sanford's going to be losing out. So that's, that's the risk.
Mark, I've got a couple of questions before we, this could go on for hours. I'm not, I've been to your office, I've met with Phil and Fortunat and talked about a lot of this stuff.
Great.
Well, not really because I'm a fossil fuel guy, so. But again, I'm green, part of me is green, I have to believe. I, I, and I enjoy, and all due respect to the attorneys and families in the room that are sponsor attorneys, attorneys are great at giving advice, but they're not, at the end of the day, the contract says Sanford School Committee agreed to X. More importantly, Sanford School Committee, I don't think could commit to a 20-year agreement without the city council's approval anyway.
Yeah.
Due to budgetary involvement. So that's probably where you ought to be today. I do worry about, you talked about that large solar organization that really is the investor. I always worry about, you know, financial assurances, who are they? What, you know, the financial, large financial organizations make investments hoping to make a buck for their stockholders and I worry about that. So, I mean, I, I have concerns about solar and I, I get it, it works, but this is a pretty big decision and I'm not even sure it's ours.
That's a great point about the city council. And one thing I would be, you know, you're signing on a 20-year agreement, who's to say 10 years down the road, there isn't a better avenue out there, you know? It's, so you're right, yeah. I think the question would be, yeah, we probably need to figure out how much the city council needs to be involved, if this even is a school department decision or, so.
Yeah, I mean, legally it's whoever is, is assigned to the CMP bill. Because it's not, because it's more of a guaranteed savings program, my understa, because there's no, you know, in terms of like making a contract that is saying, okay, we're going to, you know, purchase our energy. Because of the way LD 1711 was structured as an incentive program to get the net energy billing credits flowing to institutions like this, what I've heard is that, you know, as long as you're the entity that on the CMP bill, then you're legally can sign up for this guaranteed savings program. But again, check with your attorney, check with the council, but that's, that's my understanding. If you're set up similar to Biddeford, I know Biddeford is a little bit different because the mayor sits on the school board. And so, but however it's, 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 it's worked, you know, they did not have to go to the city to get, to get it passed. They were able to vote as a school board to say, let's continue this conversation and, you know, then the attorney came, you know, attorney signed off on the contract and all of that, so.
Okay, so was this just kind of an initial presentation? Get us all thinking about it?
There's no decisions or anything.
Was there any, are there any thoughts of trying to work this in with the budget process come February or is this further out than that?
Premature, but I did want to at least put it out there. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, just a few last slides, you know, just saying consistent long-term solar savings. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about, you know, discount, discounted purchase of net energy billing credits. I think everyone has their head around that now. This is one array that we built up in Scout Egan, the cities of, the city of Rockland, Rangeley, Dover, Foxdrop, Topson, Vassalboro, Vassalwer Community School, they've all signed on to this, are saving money. Again, built and maintained by Revision Energy. And this is my contact information.
Awesome. I think, any other questions for Michael? We good? Well, thanks for the, the presentation and I'm sure the discussion will continue.
Yeah, I will say that demand is, is high for, to get into, into these solar farms. And so it's one of these things where if you want to, you know, I wouldn't drag your feet on it. Because what happened is last summer, they, the five megawatt, because solar was so popular, they, they, the legislature with LD 936, they cut it from five megawatts to two megawatt arrays. So the demand is increasing, supply is decreasing. So therefore now is a great time, I understand there's transition happening here, but now is a great time to explore this, to actively, you know, push forward on it if you want to get this AD. And oh, from the student perspective too, should just shout out that a lot of student groups are involved in, you know, just being active and saying, this is the direction that we want to go, we want to save taxpayers money and we want to do what's right for, for climate. So just a shout out to the student representative. And yeah, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm all, I'm all here.
Awesome, great. Thanks. Thanks for coming, have a great night and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Okay, so next we have student representative reports. JP, it could be your very first one.
I don't have anything officially prepared since this is my first meeting, still kind of learning the ropes.
I thought you'd be coming right out of the gates with something. Did I have, my, my expectations were too high?
Kind of all that I have to share is that Sanford High School abroad, which will be taking the class of 2023 to Italy next February, we just sold candy gams all last week. We started delivering those today, so kind of spreading, spreading some holiday cheer. People bought messages and then people delivered candy canes attached with those messages. And then we have a couple basketball games coming up this week and I think everybody's looking forward to a Christmas bright.
Excellent, thanks JP. Good job for the first one. Okay, Sanford School Department Safe Return to School and Continuity of Instruction Plan 2021-22 update.
Sure, so just to give us the latest COVID update, we continue to remain, transmission remains high. transmission remains high, cases last Friday were nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven, that was the mo- uh, in the state, most yet. The case rate per one-hundred-thousand was also the highest yet at four-fifty-one-point-twenty-six. Sanford cumulative cases, uh, as of December fifteenth, uh, uh, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven in Sanford, five-hundred-and-ninety-six in Springvale. Our Sanford School Department cases since the beginning of school year, we had thirteen cases in the district today, four at Carl J. Lamb, two at Margaret Chase Smith, two at Sanford Pride, three at the middle school, two at the high school, for a total of thirteen, that's a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-five since school started. All five of our schools remain in outbreak status, um, for that. Also, wanted to point out that, um, um, an update on our estimated staff vaccinations, that's not something that is required anymore by the DOE or DHHS, but we still, um, did our own, um, check on that at the, the beginning of December, and we're at an eighty-five percent vaccination rate with our staff overall. That breaks down into schools of eighty-two percent at Carl J. Lamb, eighty-six percent at MCS, eighty-five percent at Pride, eighty percent at the middle school, eighty-eight percent at the high school, uh, and, um, SRTC is, uh, just over ninety-seven percent. As I mentioned, that's an overall idea of eighty-five percent, um, for a vaccination rate. Pool testing, sign-ups for students and staff, a hundred-and-eighty, this is as of December fourteenth, a hundred-and-eighty-three at C.J.L., a hundred-and-seventy-two at MCS, eighty-nine at Pride, two-hundred-and-thirty-five at the high school, and two-hundred-and-fifty-six at the middle school. I did wanna point out that, uh, last Friday, the United States Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals dissolved the hold on mandatory vaccination that was put into place by the United States Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. And so, that, what that means is, we anticipate that the main Board of, um, Occupational Safety and Health, uh, will be a meeting, uh, will be established, and they will then vote on the state standards for compliance with that OSHA vaccine mandate. And so, that's something that we're gonna be monitoring closely with, um, so that we can look at that, uh, to make sure that, when that's gonna be a requirement, and then to make sure that we will be able to adhere to that. Also, last Friday, um, the U.S. CDC issued new guidance and criteria on the test-to-stay options for schools when responding to a positive case in a school setting. And so, that, uh, has impact in Maine, 'cause the Maine CDC is gonna be reviewing the current SOP, standard operating procedures, for handling a positive case along with this new guidance. I do wanna mention that last Friday, I did send letters on behalf of the Sanford School Department to both Dr. Shaw at the, uh, Maine CDC, and also Commissioner Lambrue to Maine Department of Health and Human Services. And that was, uh, a letter to them that was to let them describe, uh, to describe to them the challenges that we in the Sanford School Department are facing daily, and for us trying to operate our schools. Uh, you've heard me talk about that, in terms of just all the staffing challenges that we have, uh, that's just one part of it. Uh, when you're talking about the constant threat of quarantines and shutdowns of our classroom schools or in the entire district, uh, also, the overwhelming lack of normalcy or conventional structure to the day, to the week, to the month of the school year, due to these constant, yet sporadic interruptions. The short-term and long-term effects of these, um, disruptions upon our students and staff's mental health, as well as our school's culture and climates, the inability to provide or implement predictable daily patterns that support learning, to help our students, to help them establish positive study-work habits and prepare them, uh, for life beyond school, um, that pervasive sense of uncertainty and insecurity that we're all facing, having to cancel events, school events, that's everything from sporting events to other traditions that support our schools, the strain that the logistics of all these changes impose on every aspect of our school department, the financial strain on the districts as we wrestle with the staffing shortages and the last minute of shuffling of resources. And really, what we've noticed over this time is that the growing animosity and mistrust from students and parents towards the school district, due to this lack of predictability, structure, and support, that we do provide our students and our families, and in turn, the Sanford community. And that's something where we're continuing to hear from parents, uh, and especially their impact in these situations, when it comes down to the quarantines. So, we did reach out, and we're asking for the current contact tracing and quarantine requirements. We don't believe that they are feasible, and we're asking them to take a, a different look at that, and then also, uh, the idea of the, the disruption that that's causing for all of the missed school, uh, to be able to do that. So, I know I've had a, a number of conversations with families who are frustrated, I think we're all frustrated in terms of where that is. I get it, it's really difficult, you did hear me earlier in the report talk about the increase in cases, and we are worried about the variant that is also coming in, into play, but I also know that I am concerned in terms of the impact that it's had on everyone, uh, our students, our staff, our families, and our Sanford community, uh, in terms of where we're at. That being said, uh, we are hoping and had word that, as I mentioned earlier, there could be some changes to that SOP, and if so, we're expecting those to come back here over the hall, upcoming holiday break, and hopefully be in place by the beginning of January. I am tempering my expectations a little bit, just because of everything that's going on right now, we're at our highest point in terms of where, uh, things are with, uh, with COVID. So, I end with kudos, once again, to everyone who's had to continue to step up and be able to balance that. I will say that the upcoming holiday break is welcomed, uh, it is also well-deserved, uh, for everyone. Uh, I can see us, uh, doing some contact tracing right up through Wednesday, but I will also wanna let the community know that probably over that vacation, you're not gonna see the contact tracing that normally would be happening, um, for that, because everyone's gonna be, uh, taking that well-deserved break, uh, that we have. So, um, that's an update in terms of where things are with our return-in-person learning five days a week and continuity of instruction plan. I do wanna also highlight that, um, have received a lot of thank yous, uh, from our staff, in terms of our employee retention initiative that we talked about the last meeting, we were able to distribute those last week, and those were very, very appreciated and very well-received.
Awesome, that's great to hear. Um, I know we did get a couple emails in from teachers that expressed their thank you for the thank you, which is always nice to get, not necessary, because it was really about thanking them. Um, okay, any questions or anything from Matt, Amy?
I would just, it, it's not a question, it's just more, um, when people, I, I'm finally understanding the lingo about what SOP and this and that all mean, so, when you're talking about the letter that you sent to Dr. Shaw and, um, DHHS, that is more to ask them to really evaluate the standard operating procedures that the school district has to follow regarding the quarantine, so that the, this administration and the school nurses, when they're calling families and saying, your son or daughter or child is in quarantine, that basically that is because of what Augusta is saying they need to follow. So, it's not the school nurses, the administration that are making up the rules, it's Augusta, and so, that's where, um, people need to know that that's where it's coming from, it's not people trying to purposely put your child in quarantine.
Yeah, that's an SOP that we're following, it, that is from Maine CDC, endorsed by the Maine Department of Education, and like you mentioned, Amy, that is not something that is Sanford-specific, that is us following the rules.
Great, good point, Amy. Anything else, anybody? All good? Okay, uh, contract with Acton update.
Yeah, at the last meeting, Jonathan asked where we were, we had a workshop, uh, with the school committee at Acton, and our school committee, uh, back, uh, probably over a month ago at this time, uh, now, so, uh, our business manager, business administrator, Cheryl Fornier, met with the Acton Business Administrator, so the two of them have reviewed that contract, there's some minor, some changes that they were able to look at. Next step is, um, their business manager's going back to their superintendent, Cheryl and I are gonna get together, be able to look at where that is, and then, uh, what I can see happening is us talking with the Acton superintendent, uh, looking at that, and I anticipate probably a smaller subcommittee of some of our school committee and their school committee, uh, being able to finalize that document. We just didn't wanna bring everyone together without a process and a starting point to see where that is. So, that work is still ongoing, I think, um, Cheryl just had that meeting last week, uh, with that, so, that's an update on that.
Excellent, thanks, questions? No, we're all good? Uh, okay, now on to the, uh, positive news.
Sure, so, one of the highlights of our meeting here is sharing, uh, some of the various news that's happening in our schools, that isn't so much talking about budgets or those other exciting things like COVID with that. So, Sanford High School's having a shortened spirit week this week, um, today was winterwear, that was appropriate with, uh, the weather we had over the weekend, tomorrow is holiday hats, and Wednesday's the ever-famous ugly holiday sweaters. If you've been walking around the high school recently, you say that they've had, uh, their door decorating contest, and you can see there's a, some pictures of those throughout the school to be able to do that. Uh, there are candy canes that are going to the senior class on Monday, and that's gonna include an inspirational quote, and those are being provided by Project Grad. And, uh, JP, you mentioned your candy gams there, uh, also that I think have been a big hit. Looking over at SRTC, our Culinary Arts Program, under, um, Chef Kuchar's guidance, catered a breakfast for the administrators and counselors from the eight partner schools, the eight sending schools last Thursday, uh, no easy feat, when you look at the COVID precautions that were in place and the timing, because, uh, students just show up right at the beginning when the event starts, so there's a lot of work that went into that, but, um, kudos to them, uh, nothing but rave reviews from the attendees, um, for that. That was the kickoff of the SRTC's admissions process, as they're able to have that, um, breakfast, uh, for people, so, nice work, Culinary Arts, and you can also, some of the making of the gingerbread houses, also for that. Moving over to the middle school, uh, wanted to, congratulations to the Gagnon Twins, Jack and Keegan applied for instruments through a continuum arts collective, and that helps families in New Hampshire and Maine, providing musical instruments, art supplies, and music lessons, and guess what? They were selected, so kudos to them. Carl J. Lamb School, um, they, uh, you're seeing there a picture of their news and latest, Carl J. Fish, is their new and beautiful elegant fighter fish that is, um, in their student support room with Miss B. and their students, they're growing radishes and wheat grass in an aquaponics tank. And so, some kindergarten has helped Miss B. to plant the seeds, and they're gonna have some friends help pick out the radishes and wheat grass, uh, with that. So, big welcome to Mr. Carl J. Fish. Margaret Chase Smith School, um, the empathy theme, uh, through all of our, uh, elementary schools this month and December is empathy, so that's something they've been participating in two different drives to show empathy, the first one was for the Animal Welfare Society, where students donate dog and cat toys and food, and they've also been donating mittens, gloves, and hats for students who need them, and they've also been practicing their empathy at home, uh, with their own empathy bingo board, and every time a student completes an act of empathy, they cross it off their board, and they've been sending, uh, both Mrs. Halasy and Mr. Bisson pictures of students completing these activities to share on the morning announcements. Holiday activities, they've been participating in different activities to show their literacy development, there's a, a few different pictures there of, um, Margaret Chase Smith, their kindergarten students have been practicing their OT skills and writing their name, by stringing the letters of their names to make lights. Second grade students made reflective mittens, when they wrote down the most important thing they've learned so far this year. Uh, it'd be nice to probably read in on some of those, I'm sure those answers would be interesting. And third grade's also been working on gifts to send home to families, and ugly sweaters have also made their way down to MCS, as the staff have been wearing those, and the students are gonna be voting for their favorite before the upcoming school vacation. And the PTA put on the holiday extravaganza, uh, recently, where students could participate in crafts, buy some gifts for families, and guess what? Santa Claus made a surprise, surprise appearance to also take pictures with the students, great turnout with over a hundred students as part of that, and there's some more pictures there. Over at Sanford Pride, uh, grade four classrooms with Mr. Stone and Mrs. Curtis, uh, Curtis have sponsored a Giving Tree, that's gonna benefit the Maine Children's Home, that's one way the students at Pride and their families and staff can brighten the holidays for area children, providing new gifts for kids whose families are facing financial hardship, following right along in that theme of empathy. And, um, one of the things they've done over at Pride is they have the assistant principal for a day, and so, here is, uh, Ageline, I hope I'm saying that correctly, if not, my apologies, but she was, um, uh, chosen from a list of students that have either received a high-five or a positive office referral, and those are really directly related to the core values, honesty, respect, responsibility, courage, and compassion. Asia had a very busy and fun day, she shared that her favorite part of the day was checking the bathrooms and walking around to make sure the school looked like it was supposed to. Uh, well done there. And then, over at, uh, Community Adult Education, congratulations to Jane Perkins, the director, she's now completed the HISA training, and she can be a chief examiner for, uh, SCAE, and that HISA, HISA is built on the College and Career Readiness Standards for Adult Education, um, for that, it's a great way for out-of-school youth and adults, the best opportunity to demonstrate their skills and knowledge and earn a state-issued high school equivalency, uh, equivalency, uh, credential, um, for that. And, uh, I think Jane, I'm not sure if that was on this past Saturday, or is coming up, uh, but Jane also was on, uh, with, uh, chamber talk with Rick Stanley. And that's the positive news.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, and we'll move on to the directors' reports. Uh, Steve, floor is yours.
Good evening, I have a couple updates for you this evening on items we've talked about in previous meetings. The first one is a transportation update. Um, since our last meeting, we, in early November, Ledgmere has added three new licensed drivers to their fleets. With these additions, we are now able to cover all the routes that we have on the road. Um, although we have added drivers, uh, we still do not have the spare drivers, so if something happens to one of our drivers, um, parents should still be prepared, um, to arrange transportation for their children, but we are in better shape than we were, um, six weeks ago. Also, one of the concerns that we've had, um, with transportation has been athletics, and that's an ongoing concern even prior to COVID, and Ledgmere has hired, um, two athletic drivers specifically for athletics, um, so then, we have been able to cover all our winter trips, um, for athletics this, um, season so far, and they're all scheduled, so that's really good news, and they're gonna continue to advertise and try to find, um, folks that are interested in just traveling for athletics. Um, if staffing remains the same when we come back from holiday break, which all indications are, we're gonna be in a good spot, we are looking to add on the activity bus at the high school and the middle school, Ledgmere feels like they are ready to take that on, which is also good news, um, with that. So, they continue to work on staffing, they are still short, if you know somebody wants to drive a bus or be a monitor, they're, they're still looking for folks, um, with that. Second thing is, we've been working on in the school department, it seems like for months, um, is the new Maine Law in regards to immunizations. If you remember, Maine Law removed the religious and philosophical exemptions back in September. Also, in the past year, they've added some new, um, vaccinations that have been required of kids. Um, these required vaccinations include the T-DAP vaccine, which covers tetanus, whooping cough, um, and the MMR vaccine, which covers measles, mumps, rubella, and the polio vaccine, and the varicella, and the chickenpox vaccine, so there's a lot of changes. And so, it all came to a head on December first, um, when the grace period was over, and as of December first, any student that was not vaccinated, or did not have proof that they had an appointment to get vaccinated, we have held them out of school. Um, back in September, we had close to three-hundred kids that needed, uh, vaccinations, we've worked since late last spring in terms of notifying parents, we held a clinic this summer, the nurses made phone calls, the administrators made phone calls, and I'm happy to report, we're down to just a handful. we're down to just a handful. And when I say a handful, 12 or so, K through 12, that we're still working on getting that done. So a big kudos to our nursing team, the nursing assistants that we have in the office, as well as our administrators as we come into compliance with this law. And thank you to the families. It's just with COVID-19 and this, it just, it's been a lot. Last thing I have to update tonight on is pre-K expansion grant. If you remember back in October, we had a workshop where we talked about pre-K. We did work to submit a grant through the state of Maine for pre-K expansion. If you remember, our pre-K expansion that we talked about was adding a pre-K program at each one of our elementary schools, expanding our program at SRTC to be full day, and also continuing our arrangement at Head Start. We did receive word from the state of Maine last week that our grant has been conditionally awarded. The war decision is conditioned upon final approval by the State Procurement Review Committee and the successful negotiation of the contract. So over the next couple of weeks, I expect the D U E to reach out, and we will look at a possible contract to move forward with that. So that's encouraging as we move into budget season to know that that has moved forward. So I'm looking forward to that. Any other questions?
Did you just say you're looking forward to budget season?
No, no, no. Looking forward to pre-K, Mr. Mace.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have new business. First up is a contract extension for our very own superintendent Nelson. Yeah, how much do we need to go into depth with this? I mean, we all kind of looked at it.
Yeah, I think via executive session that was supportive.
Okay, so I'll make a recommendation to extend the superintendent of schools contract through the 2024, 2025 school year as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Amy or Matt? Any discussion? The only thing I want to add to this is I want to really be on the record publicly is saying that Sanford is a very, very, should be very thankful that we have the superintendent we do. We're very lucky to have him. He works tirelessly for the kids, for everybody here. People don't know exactly. If you think you know how much Matt does, he does twice that. So just to let everybody know at home, I've talked to him enough on the weekends and nights to know. So, okay, anything else? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. And then we also have an extension for our assistant superintendent, who are actually equally as happy to keep on board. So I'm going to make a motion to extend the assistant superintendent of schools contract through the 24, 25 school year as presented. Do I have a second on that? Amy with that one? Any discussion? I know Steve works almost as tirelessly as Matt, but he's just the assistant, so he doesn't have to work quite as hard. Is there something to say, Jonathan?
Give me a second.
I think, yeah, Amy's seconded it.
I've just always been supportive of Steve having his background in elementary school and Matt also in the middle school world and so forth, that they're educators, they get it, and they're here for the right reasons. So I just appreciate both of them, and I think Sanford is very fortunate to have both of them. So I look forward to working with them both.
Yeah, we have a very good team. Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Unanimous? Excellent. You guys can't go anywhere now, at least until 2025. Up next, we've got the 22, 23 school committee budget calendar.
Sure. So I don't know, Sarah, is that something you might be able to put up on the screen or?
I think she already did.
Oh, there it is. Wow.
Like one step ahead of you.
That's amazing. Well done, Sarah. So, yeah, it is that time again. You heard Jonathan ask if we were looking forward to budget, and I don't know if there's ever a budget season that we're looking forward to. But it is time to start looking at that. We, our administrators and directors have already submitted their budgets to Cheryl Fornier. They've all met with Cheryl to be able to go over that. Next steps will be when we return from the holiday break, the directors, the principals will be meeting with Cheryl and I and Steve, and we'll be reviewing all those budgets line by line. All of that is done so that we can then bring a budget, a preliminary starting point budget to the school committee. And we're going to follow what we've done as a similar format that we've done in the past. That will begin at the end of January. Monday, January 24th is when we'll have our first school committee budget workshop. We're looking to have that going, and we may want to talk about this, but the times that I put down there are 4:00 to 6:30. That's a long time, but, and at that first one, we hope to go a presentation of the overall school budget by function and cost center, and then we can start to zero in on Articles 1 through 5. Their regular instruction, special education, CTE, other instruction, and student-staff support. There is a school committee meeting that will follow that evening at 6:30. Then looking at probably not being able to finish Articles 1 through 5, we'll look at also having a workshop that Wednesday, 4:00 to 6:30, if needed, for Articles 1 through 5. The following Monday, January 31st, will be a budget workshop where we'll really then focus on Articles 6 through 11: system and school admin, transportation, facilities, debts, all other, and also adult education. There is no school committee meeting following that one on the 31st. That Wednesday, February 2nd, we'll be looking at a school committee budget workshop. We'll finish Articles 6 through 11. But that night, we'll try to focus on the bridge program expansion. That's something that is something we've talked about, and I think is important for us to have information. The following Monday, February 7th, we'll have a school committee budget workshop prior to the school committee meeting. That one, we're going to review the overall budget, and we're also going to talk about pre-K expansion. You heard Steve earlier talk about us conditionally receiving that grant, so we want to spend some time there on the pre-K expansion. We're also, at that time, could be having our preliminary 279s, which is the subsidy reports from the state, which is obviously a very important piece for us. And then that Monday, February 7th, there will be a school committee meeting following the budget workshop there. On Wednesday, February 9th, we're really going to use that budget workshop to focus on the ESER funds. Remember, we've used those ESER funds. One of the primary purposes for us to get our students back in person five days a week and to also address any educational recovery. Has been a lot of hiring with those ESER funds, so that's going to be the focus of that workshop on the 9th. The following Monday, we will have a school committee budget workshop on the 14th. And that, at that time, we've kind of left that open-ended to kind of finalize, to see where things are at. And we also have another tentative meeting that Wednesday, the 16th, also if needed. Right now, there's nothing planned during the February school vacation week, the 21st to 24th. There's probably an asterisk there because that might have to be subject to change. And then our second school committee meeting in February is on Monday, February 28th. And for that one, one of the agenda items on that school committee agenda will be adopting the final 2022, 2023 school budget. So that's going to be on that agenda. Typically, we might have to have a workshop done ahead of that meeting just for any other final things that we might have to do. So this is what we've got. That is all lined up because if the plan holds true with the city, our first budget committee meeting with the city budget committee will be on Thursday, March 3rd. And that's why it's important for us to work backwards on that, to have a Monday, February 28th, Monday, February 28th agenda item to approve that. So I have shared some of these dates with you previously. I'm curious to anyone's feedback, if there's anything that we want to be able to adjust as we kind of look at that, or if there's any other items beyond bridge expansion, pre-K, and ESER funds that people might want to be able to also talk about.
Can I recommend you put a few more in there since I won't be here? I might come and sit in on them just so I, you know, ease my way out.
I see, I see no support. I see no support for that, no. I think it's just concerning that it's hard to have all of us there for every one of those meetings. There are so many conflicts that I think we, if we can get a few of us to each of them, we'll do the best we can. So it doesn't matter what nights really, Matt?
So we okay Mondays through Wednesdays right now, trying to, in that timeframe, to be able to do that? Okay.
I appreciate the heads up.
Yeah, I do too. And also looking at my schedule, I know there's going to be a few that I won't be able to make, but I agree, trying to get everybody there.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 22, 23 school budget, school committee budget calendar as presented. Second? Anybody? Amy? Oh, sorry, I guess Paula did. Did you already write Amy down?
Oh, I changed it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Excellent. Okay, what do we got next? Old business, I see none. Resignations, Mr. Nelson?
I have three to announce. One, the college and career advisor through Sanford Community Adult Education, Jeannie McDonald-Johnson. With that, Beverly Bucher is a second shift custodian at the middle school. And Ellie Andrea, a second shift custodian at middle school in MCS. Never started that position, but we had, I think, accepted her appointment. And so those are three that will be leaving us. A big thank you to Jeannie McDonald-Johnson for all the work that she's done, not only for Sanford Community Adult Education, but also for the Sanford community.
Best wishes to them all wherever life takes them. Staff appointments.
Okay, so we've got Canton Amber, Ed Tech 2 Resource Room at the middle school, Patrick Lyons, third shift custodian at the high school and technical center, and Sherry Smith, Ed Tech 2 at Carl J. Lamb School.
Welcome aboard.
And I also want to announce the following Schedule C-1 appointments. These are some that we missed earlier. Brett Williams and Kristy Baker for the drama/ musical director for the upcoming musical this spring.
Which everybody is very excited for. And then we have a coaching appointment.
Yeah, another coaching appointment for our second winter season at the middle school. Brent Coleman as the wrestling coach for Sanford Middle School.
Excellent. I bumped into him the other day, a little while back, and he was super excited for it.
Yes.
So I think that'll be great for the kids.
Yep.
Okay, staff transfers, I see none?
Yep.
Nominations?
Get one that will lead the school committee to take action on. I'm happy to announce to nominate Eileen Godd as the Resource Room teacher over at Sanford Pride Elementary.
Yes, we need a motion on that, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination as presented. Do I have a second? Paula? Look, I remembered to look at you that time.
No, thank you. Finally.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? You'll find out, it's hard looking that way. Policies and procedures, Steve?
Okay, the following policies and procedures will be presented for a second reading. Non-discrimination, equal opportunity, affirmative action policy AC, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees policy ACAB, employee discrimination, harassment, and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedure ACAB-R, and recruiting and hiring administrative staff policy GCFB. The policies and procedures above have been updated to include familial status as a protected category as Maine law. And the recruiting and hiring administrative staff policy GCFB has also been updated to include changes in protected classes, including color, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, and genetic information, which was previously changed under the law and never had been updated in that policy. And so I recommend approval for these policies.
Yeah, there weren't any changes from the first readings, right, Steve?
No changes, nope. Been pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading of policy AC as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Paula? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Make a motion to accept the second reading of policy ACAB as presented. Paula's seconding it already. And any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Make a motion to accept the second reading of policy ACAB-R as presented. Second from Paula? Discussion? All in favor? And then finally, a motion to accept the second reading of policy GCFB as presented, seconded by, wait for it, no, she doesn't want it, by John. And any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, items for future agenda? Anybody want to throw anything out there? No? I think the budget might keep you busy pretty soon.
Talk to me in May.
Calendar announcements, the next regular school committee meeting will be Monday, January 3rd, and I will not be here. That'll be a formative meeting, so Mr. Nelson will have the honor to start it off and...
Trying to sound less happy.
You'll have a new chair. I will miss each and every one of you. I'll be everywhere to find you, so I can hunt you down.
Also, on Monday, January 3rd, just for your, there'll be a, we're going to have an executive session at 4:00. That will be a student disciplinary hearing. Also, on January 3rd, we'll have a workshop at 5:00. That will be with the auditor of our finances representative to go over the audit in the workshop because that will also be an agenda item for later on that evening. And as Dawn mentioned, that is an organizational meeting where we'll elect a chair and a vice chair, as well as the standing committee assignments with that. And then also, just trying to set up a meeting to look at our health insurance. And so John and Jonathan, you've typically been part of those, and we're looking at Tuesday, January 4th at 3:00. If that's something that works for you, let me know. If it doesn't...
That's for me.
Okay.
3:00 you said.
Yeah, and that's usually with our representatives from Acadia Benefits, but also, we'll also include our insurance committee, which also includes teachers with that as well, so that we can, once again, that's going to have some big implications on our budget, and so that's something we want to get out in front of by having that meeting. So we'll go forward with organizing that.
Excellent. Anything else? Anybody else wants to announce? No? Okay, then I will make, what was that? Oh, good. Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn then. Do I have a second for that? Second from Mr. Rue? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? We're adjourned.